This is a special session in this very big conference going around for two days. And here we have Yannis Armacolas from Elia Mep and University of Macedonia. He's representing Saudi's European research system. Terry Cox from University of Glasgow presenting Europe Asia studies. And Rafael Juequet from Central Asian Survey. He's the editorial manager of the journal. Unfortunately, Ivan Hagan from East European Publicity had an accident, so he's not part of it today. And in the original programme you have Elar Ismaida from Central Asian Congresses, but he was unable to attend. So we will have two rounds in this session. The first round will be devoted to the introductions of journals. And my request from the representatives of the journals is to describe their journal in about five minutes. The history, the contents of their journal, editorial board procedures for publication, from submission to the printing phase. And for instance, a question would be out of how many submissions you publish in the journal, the indexes that you're covered in, and the most important would be the areas, the topics. As far as I know, the organisers have tried to put together the journals that are publishing about this region. So focus on your subject areas would be very relevant for the audience. And also the relevance that you'd like to share with us, with the young scholars around here. And so maybe we could follow the order in the programme and start with Yannis. Who is yours?
I apologise, I've been sick for several days and so my voice is really terrible. I try to be as short as possible because it's not fun listening to people speak. So the journal is called South East European Life Studies. It was established in... I am the managing editor. The journal was established in 2001. And the publisher, like Major General, is in France. And it's associated to a thing I call the Foundation for European Foreign Policy, better known internationally as Elia Mep. It has opposed a standard and normal review process and accepts not only academic manuscripts, but also policy-reared analysis. The frequency is four issues per year. And the particularity of the specific journal is that it brings together South East Europe and Black Sea, two neighbouring regions which have many similarities but also many differences. In fact, the original aim of the journal was to try to raise scholarly awareness about these regions, which were not always, in the last 20 years, very well-known in Europe, also in the scholarly community. Maybe a bit more South East Europe, especially because of the conflicts in the 1990s, but still, in my view, quite unknown in both regions, especially in the West. And I guess it's very important to mention in the context of this conference that apart from individual articles on the Black Sea which appear obviously in every issue of the journal, we typically have one special issue every year devoted on the Black Sea region and called Caucasus. So there is the attempt to have as many articles from the Black Sea region as possible. Let me now, in the next five minutes, present the profile of the journal using some statistics from the first 12 years, well, from 2001 until today, so from the first 12 years of the journal. So we have 12 volumes and I will mainly focus on the 330 original articles. So in most slides excluding book reviews in US and other special contributions. So let me start by presenting maybe some themes or categories, my topic, of these original articles. And these are, I try to organise somehow the various topics that are published in the journal and give some statistics, maybe percentages of these various categories or topics. And 22% is this very large category, I call it state transformation, which includes transition politics, democratisation, political economics, social reforms, also state building, all sorts of politics and economics of state transformation. And very close to state transformation, 20% of the original articles is security, articles for national security issues. Then we have issues like regional cooperation, articles for foreign policy issues, the EU policies towards the two regions, domestic politics, party politics, elections, et cetera, energy obviously, bilateral relations, et cetera, et cetera. But by far the two main, excuse me, the two main categories here are this state transformation category and security issues. And regarding disciplines now, again, politics and international relations are by far the discipline that is most represented in the original articles, probably in the journal. But we do have a not insignificant number of economic, political, economic developments established articles, 24%, and then the rest history, et cetera, are very, very few in the journal. In terms of the geographical focus of the articles, we have the two main regions, post-communist Balkans, that means excluding Greece and Turkey, and the Black Sea region with 20% and 14% are the biggest number of articles. And then we move to articles focusing on individual countries and there we have a big number of articles focusing on Greece and then on Turkey and then Russia, Kosovo, Albania, Macedonia with much smaller number of articles. So post-communist Balkans, Black Sea, Greece and Turkey are the biggest, have the biggest percentage of articles with focus on these countries. And we have much fewer articles from countries like Slovenia, Azerbaijan, Moldova, Montenegro, Cyprus, et cetera, et cetera. But from that you can see more or less the geographical focus of certain countries. So we do accept articles from Turkey, Cyprus for example, although we don't have some submissions from Cyprus. In terms of regional versus country focus of the articles, slightly over 55% of the articles are country cases, whether individual country cases or comparative country cases. And then 43%, excuse me, 43% of the articles have a kind of broader regional focus. And these are, I mentioned already, the top countries, top five countries in the articles, so countries focusing on country cases, Greece, Turkey, Russia, Kosovo, Albania. In terms of regional focus, so articles focusing on broader regional issues rather than countries, we have post-communist Balkans, the Black Sea, and then much fewer former Yugoslavia and Caucasus, Central Eastern Europe general, former Soviet Union. Okay, that's not very important, most of them are similar papers. Well, this is interesting, I think, previous, in the last 12 years, we had 23% of the authors published more than once in our journal. And I'm quite new in this position of managing editor and when we did the statistics for this, I thought it was very interesting because it tells that a lot of authors are quite satisfied with their contribution to the journal. So they come back, whether it's the reviewing process or I don't know what, we have to investigate, but it's interesting that we have so many people coming back to submit articles to us. Much more male than female authors, unfortunately. And in terms of institutional affiliation of our authors, obviously the majority are university, university research centres and institutes, but we have a quite a good number of people from independent research centres, etc. And also very important for me, I think, especially because we have also policy-reared articles, people from international organisations, Centiaos, Partners, companies, you name it, 12%. Now, contributing countries, and here we have, the texture is very uneven. The journal was originally founded in Greece, now it is published in the UK, but many of the people in the editorial board are still Greek, although we do have mixed editorial board. So we have a lot of submissions from Greece itself, much bigger than UK and US submissions. We do have a lot of submissions from Turkey and lately, many more, last couple of years, many more than before. So we do have now, I think, more Turkish authors than Greek authors, which is good for the balance of the journal. And then we have Germany, but we have, excuse me, the frequency of authors from countries that are very important for the journal and we want these countries to be represented in the published articles. It's very low, so we hope to have more submissions from countries in the Western Balkans, for example, or Ukraine, or Siberia, or Georgia, or Armenia. Clearly, we need to have many more interesting papers coming from these countries. We are not bad with Bulgaria and Romania, by the way, but so Western Balkans is more of a problem. Okay, Greece, UK, West Turkey, Germany. Okay, and that's, is it five minutes? Is it five minutes? So that's me, the managing editor. You can find much more information and you can read it, rather than me with this voice telling you, in the website of the journal, in the publisher's portal. And of course, there you can find the contact information. And I'm sure we will be talking more soon. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Yannis, and we have now Terry Cox from Europe Asia, and he would like to hear his introduction about the journal.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you all here and thank you to me for inviting you to this very interesting and successful conference. I'm Terry Cox, I'm the incoming editor of Europe Asia Studies. We are published from Glasgow, we are edited by Glasgow University, and we are an interdisciplinary area studies journal. And we publish articles of all the former and current, because there are a number two, like China, technically at least, and North Korea, former and current post-communist countries of Europe and Asia. So not Cuba, not Angola, but almost all the other post-communist countries. We don't publish very many on China, we're interested in it, but we don't receive a lot of them, but it is gradually increasing just recently. So we cover the whole of the Black Sea region, except unfortunately Turkey. Since Turkey is not a post-communist country, we don't accept articles specifically on Turkey or on Turkey in relation to other non-post-communist countries. Increasingly, we are receiving submissions both from Turkey and about Turkey, but the ones we can accept are Turkey in comparison with some other countries that happen to be post-communist countries, or perhaps international relations do have issues where Turkey is involved in relation to those other countries. Our focus is very broadly on the social sciences and history. And by that we mean everything from fairly hard statistical, econometric type economics through sociology, politics, geography, and to history and to some aspects of cultural studies. We don't accept articles that are about literary criticism or film criticism, film analysis, but if it was a political issue to do with film or TV programmes or literature or an economic issue, then we would accept those kind of cultural studies articles as well. We have no particular political or theoretical position, perhaps that's typical of various studies journals. I know some single-discipline journals, in politics and sociology for example, adopt a particular theoretical approach to their subject and tend not to accept articles from different points of view. But we are fairly open about that, we publish anything from any point of view as long as it's well argued and backed up by evidence, there's no strong particular theoretical or even political position that we adopt. We're international in terms of contributors and readership. We have readers from all around the world. And with the kind of deals that publishers organise these days, the vast majority of the sales of the journal are through big composite deals to libraries around the world, usually involving print copy and online copy. Our current publishers are Taylor &amp; Francis, going under the brand name of Rattlidge. I say current because we're just coming to the end of our contract and we've had interest from two other big publishing companies. Just before I came here, we had presentations from three different publishers saying, choose us to publish your journal for the next five years, which was very nice for us, also a problem because all three of them are very good. But Taylor &amp; Francis certainly will continue for at least one more year and quite possibly for another five years after that. The journal is actually owned by Glasgow University, which is fairly unusual, I think. So our relationship with the publishers is one whereby we sign a contract with them and then they publish on behalf of the university. So it means the royalty money goes to the university, the university's senior managers, tops likes most of that and they let us have a small amount of money to actually run the journal. So they're making good money from us. Because of the rather unusual position of the ownership of the journal, historically the editorial board were all members of academic staff at Glasgow University. Seems odd to people sometimes, sometimes get people say to me, you don't have any Americans on your editorial board, why is that? It's because they don't work at Glasgow University. I mean, practically you have an American who is working at Glasgow University, but not Americans working in America. The journal began way back in the late 1940s under the name of Soviet Studies, it was one of the outcomes of the beginning of the Cold War, I suppose. Universities in Western countries started to develop little institutes and units for the study of the Soviet Union and the other communist countries of Eastern Europe. And that happened in the late 40s at Glasgow University, and the people there at the time also started this journal, which they called Soviet Studies. It quickly expanded to cover all the other communist countries at the time. So we're now just coming to the end of volume 64. The name was changed to Europe Asia Studies, controversially, I think, in the early 90s after it was clear that Soviet Studies wasn't a particularly good name for the journal anymore. We still obviously publish on the historical period, the history of the Soviet Union, and in fact even earlier to pre-communist Russia of the late 19th century, and the pre-communist history of the other countries too. So we still are a Soviet Studies journal in that sense, or a communist Studies journal, but an increasing number of our articles are about developments in the post-communist The name, I should mention, I mentioned it was controversial, there was a big discussion in Glasgow University among a very small group of people, it was before I got the job as editor, and they chose the name Europe Asia Studies. A lot of people were rather unhappy because they regarded it as misleading and I suppose as editor I can agree, it is misleading for some people, especially if they don't look at the description of the journal inside our cover, where it is clear that we cover the former communist countries. So I occasionally get an article, for example, on Philippines or Japan or Portugal, and I have to write back and say, sorry, it's not anywhere in Europe and Asia, just the The currently published 10 issues a year, we gradually increase our rate over time. It means I'm almost a full-time job on a production line of getting the issues out these days, luckily I got some support from electronic assistants, Sarah Lemon. If you pass them to us or intend to, you will certainly get into correspondence with Sarah, she handles a lot of correspondence with authors. On average, we probably publish seven articles plus book reviews in each regular issue. A few years ago, we started publishing special issues where we invited a guest editor or a group of editors to come and edit a special issue on a special topic. This has become increasingly popular. When we decided to start special issues, we said the limit would be half the annual output, no more than five out of the 10. We haven't really reached five out of 10 yet, but we may do soon because we've got a lot of very good proposals for special issues. So the number, I think, improved forward this past year, including one on the Caucasus region, which I think is the latest one out, or it will be out very soon. The journal leaves my office and goes down to the publishers and it actually comes out in print a couple of months later. So I'm always a bit vague about, is it the latest one out or is it not quite out yet? It's certainly one that I've finished with. And it's edited by a group of colleagues who work mainly at the University of Birmingham in the UK, led by Garry William Yalberg, who's been going. Most of our special issues are republished as books after they've been out as a special issue for a while. I think we currently, we're up to now 11 books in the series that started life as a special issue of the journal. Like my colleagues, we're peer-reviewed, anonymous peer-reviewed journal, we send out all submissions that seem relevant to us to two expert authors in the field, sometimes to more. If the two disagree, we certainly send it to a third. Sometimes we send them back a revised version, if the referees say they're willing to do that, or sometimes if it's clear, even to me, that the revisions have been made, we leave it to reviewers and then I take the decision about the publication. We're listed in, I've got Thomson ISI, I forgot to update that, because it's now become Thomson writer. Our impact factor ratings have been fluctuating, I think we were higher until we started 10 issues a year, but because of the way impact is measured, it's articles cited in relation to the number published in the previous two years. So the more you publish, the more likely it is to begin with that your impact factor goes down. The publishers seem happy with our performance, but it means we're a little bit lower than we were a few years ago. So we're, for what it's worth, the publishers think it's worth a lot, I'm not convinced that these impact factors actually tell you much about the quality of the journals, but that's the way publishers and librarians like to work. So as I say, for what it's worth, we're 13 out of 66 listed for all the different types of area studies, not including African studies, Chinese studies, Latin American studies, any area studies that you could think of. Our average time between submission of the article, when we receive it and the first decision, i.e. we will publish this with revisions or we won't publish it, or we reject some discersion, but please re-submit, these are different possible definitions. So the average time between submission and that first decision is 129 days. I have to say, that is the average, and some can take much longer. The biggest single problem is getting reviewers to return their reviews to us in good time. And we are strongly dependent, as my colleagues will be too, on other reviewers, we don't pay them, there are no fans of the publishers who pay them. So really, they do it as a service to the community. So we can't be very angry if they take longer than we can, that's simply other, an automatic system or sending their blinders. Sometimes, often probably for very good reasons, they're just so busy, it does take longer than we would hope for. So a few will actually be decided on in much less than 129 days, but some of them can take half a year before they can get that ultimate decision. And of course, there is another delay in publishing, that's copied out of the author, nearly all the articles are sent out with a request for some revisions, some very minor, some more major, and it depends how long the author needs to make those revisions. And also, in the last two years or so, we are having a huge increase in the number of submissions, and many of them are good. So it does mean unfortunately for authors that the waiting list between acceptance and publication day is growing. And there are only so many articles we can publish in so much time that we have to do the editing. So this is an increasing problem for authors, I mean, really. It also means that we are rejecting more articles than we already did before. And currently, our rejection rate is, last time we calculated, it was a couple of months ago, 81.4%, so roughly a fifth of all articles submitted to us are accepted for publication. And that hides a lot of different stories, and please don't be put off in spotting. We did publish from a wide range of authors, including young, early career scholars as well as very senior academics. Your age, your interests, your discipline area in the country, but they're not significant in whether they accept or not, it's just that there is a lot of competition. And with the increase in submissions, we are finding an increasing number that are not really ready for publication, and that's the reason we're rejecting more. We can talk more about this later, but I think we're getting more and more articles, perhaps because of the pressure on people like yourselves to publish articles while you're writing your PhDs, that are not quite ready yet. Maybe they haven't been rewritten enough to look like articles around the chapters of your PhD, or in some cases in areas where research reports are quite common, maybe a company or government commission a research report, then the author hasn't taken the time to change the focus to make it more of an academic article. These are some of the common reasons for my rejection rates to increase. We're quite unusual in the length of article we accept, we accept up to 15,000, which is as long as the most. When I first started taking over as editor, I realised I was getting a few, not very many, but a few really good articles which were very long. And I thought about them and I couldn't think of ways of suggesting cutting them down without spoiling the article. So I thought, why not? Let's have some longer ones. Let's have some longer ones. Of course, the longer the article we accept, the more people attempt to send us either longer ones. I was saying to colleague earlier, I had to reject a twenty-three thousand article a couple of months ago. I think that's bordering on short book, when it gets to that stage, or at least when they make the series, something like that. So I think I'll try and keep it to four hundred and fifteen thousand. Perhaps in particular interest to you, along with most other journals, we publish book reviews, we like to have book reviews in all our regular issues, and we are very keen to hear from people writing their PhDs, working with research students, young colleagues, to put themselves forward. You'll see in each issue of the journal, the books received, the books we receive from the publisher. If you see one you like the look of, and you'd like to write a review, please let us know. You keep the book, that's the only payment we can give you for at least a few of the books. And we also welcome suggestions. So if you know a book, you haven't seen it in our book receipt list, we could probably get it from the publisher and ask them to review the book. I'm afraid there's not much rewards for senior academics in writing book reviews these days, and so the scope is open to younger colleagues if they wish to do this. Sometimes it's a good way of just starting the process, learning what it is to write in a style that is acceptable for the journal on a very small scale, can be part of the billboard to write an article for publication. And that's where I'll leave the introduction for now, but obviously we can come back to specific issues and have a discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Now I've used my role as the moderator and introduced the Journal of International Relations, the journal I'm designing here, as editor. I will talk about the history and the philosophy of the journal, its coverage indexes, and also the review process involved in it. We are in print since 2004, around nine volumes, and thirty-five issues have been published so far, which makes around two hundred, two hundred and fifty articles published. Editorial board, we have founding editors also, but all the work has been done by our managing editor, who is sitting over there, Mital Chediv Fala, also the head of the International Relations Department here at Kaderast University, who is responsible for every bit and pieces of the journal. And we are six assistant editors dealing with the review processes of the articles from different universities, plus an editorial board of distinguished scholars worldwide. The founding aim of the editors was to compile scholarly articles in international relations, but mainly the Turkish ones, to make a contribution to Turkish international relations, Turkish IR. This doesn't mean that we're not publishing English articles, but our focus is basically on the Turkish ones. However, there are longer abstracts for Turkish articles in English, so as to reach a wider audience. Our main goal is to have a specific journal for international relations, mainly in Turkish. Each issue has a theoretical focus, there are some theoretical articles, and we also have a regional and a current affairs section, where we put the other issues of regional relations, bilateral relations, but the conceptual articles are all framed in the theoretical parts. Book reviews, sometimes commentaries, are also included in issues. Moreover, we accept special issues, we do special issues with guest editors, sometimes we invite, sometimes we receive proposals, and we select from those proposals. So far, most of the special issues that we published were conceptual, like security, like war, energy, terrorism. Now, we recently published a special issue on Turkey's sixteen-year anniversary, a special issue on NATO. I guess some of the issues are distributed outside, but if you're interested, latest issues are on our website in whole KBS, but not the latest ones, but some earlier volumes are in KBS in our website. The publisher of the journal is an association. It's the Association for International Relations Council of Turkey, and it is linked with Kaderast University, it's based here in Kaderast University, but we don't have a publisher like Terror and Francis and so on, it is the association publishing in a private company. International coverage, we are indexed around thirty international bound indexes, among which we have been covered by Social Science Citation Index since 2008. And since then, we are receiving more English articles, we are reaching a more wider audience in this sense, after being indexed in the Social Science Citation Index. And in Turkey, it is the only international relations journal that has been indexed, even the political science, we can say. It's only New Perspectives on Turkey, there's another journal, but it's not political science, it's not international relations, it has a more wider coverage, but the only focused journal is international relations that has been covered by Social Science Citation Index. Let me give you some brief information on how we review the submissions. As soon as we receive the submissions, there is an editorial process, whether or not this article works, goes to be reviewed by the reviewers, does word it. And then when we decide that it needs to be reviewed, we send it to two reviewers. If they agree on publication, we are fine. After an editorial process, again, double check about the reliability, credibility, we publish. If they agree on non-publication, then we are fine. But when they disagree, we send the piece to a third reviewer, and then of course the editorial process takes place, and then the article comes out. Around, we have a publication rate of around ten fifteen percent, or might, or maybe you could need to be, we have a rejection rate around eighty percent, eighty-five percent. But it's not that hard to get published when you comply with all the rules and all the writing procedures and things that cover in the journal from the IR perspective. So for now, this is all I would like to say as an introduction. Maybe you could talk more in the question answer session. I have my business cards with the for the journal, and I introduce you the managing editor, so you might have your questions also as a private when you finish your session. So now, sticking to my five minutes, I would like to pass the floor to Rappel, and he will be representing Central Asian Survey.
Hello. First, I'd like to thank ASCN for inviting me and giving me the opportunity to present Central Asian Survey. It's very rare to have the opportunity to have so many promising PhD students and young Background about myself, I'm an editorial manager. I manage all of the journals, not just Central Asian Survey, and I'm not an academic per se, and even less an academic on Central Asia, so I'm very uncomfortable talking about the process than about the content of the journal. The journal is now thirty years old, thirty-one to be precise, because we celebrated the thirtieth anniversary last year. It was founded by S. Anders Wimbush in nineteen eighty-two, and then was edited by Mary Venison Broxen until 2006, which is quite a long time. In 2006, the journal came to SOAS, because Denis Cande Yotti, the new editor, was based at SOAS, which is why I also worked for the journal. In 2006 also, we decided to have a dedicated book review editor, whose name is Nick Megron, who works in geography at the University of Newcastle in the UK. To give you the synopsis of Central Asian Survey, it is the main, if not the only, established peer-reviewed, multidisciplinary journal, concerned with the history, politics, cultures, religions, and economies of the Central Asian and Caucasian regions. These include primarily the republics of the former city of Central Asia, and the South and North Caucasus. We also cover areas like Xinjiang, the Chinese Xinjiang, Mongolia, Afghanistan, Iran, and Turkey. Although I must say, for the latter two, Iran and Turkey, we tend to publish only articles that relate to Central Asia, or it's relations, relations between Central Asia and Turkey, or the same thing with Iran, we don't publish on Turkey itself, and the same with Iran. Most of our articles deal with countries such as Kazakhstan, Kyrgyzstan, Tajikistan, Turkmenistan, Uzbekistan, I'd say these are the main, main focuses, although we have published on Georgia, we had a special issue after the Rose Revolution, just after that, which was quite popular. The central aim of Central Asian Survey, and I quote, is to reflect and promote advances in Arab-based scholarship in the social sciences and humanities, and enhance the understanding of processes of local and regional change that makes Central Asia important, is an area of significant contemporary interest. So not only is it, we're trying to promote scholarship on Central Asia, but also scholarship from Central Asia, so we're really eager to promote local scholars from the region, and I'll get back to that a bit later. A few words about peer review, I think, being last, I think everything was said, we basically abide by the same principle, which is a double-blind peer review for all articles received, or at least the ones that are sent out for review, which means that the author doesn't know who's reviewing their article and vice versa, with a caveat that, in theory, this is all very well, but often people are quite easy to find out, especially in a small field. So nobody says anything, but often people know who wrote the article. Out of these two reviewers, we tend to have at least one from the editorial board, because the topics are quite varied and don't always have the reviewing capacity within the board to cover all subjects, and sometimes we'll have somebody from the board and somebody from outside. It is, we have a few problems sometimes finding people, I'm thinking of energy-related articles, for some reason seem to be hard to find people, either they're too busy, or so if you know anyone, please let me know, or if you're interested to learn yourself at today's stage, please tell me. The journal is also published by Taylor &amp; Francis, so three journals from Taylor &amp; Francis. It's available online and in print, and according to Taylor &amp; Francis, it's about, it's, it can be accessed by about eighteen hundred institutions, because long gone from other days, when you knew actually how many people read us. Now, it's all consortia deals, so universities, institutions buy bundles, and they have access to the whole social science collection of a particular publisher, so it's difficult to know actually how many subscribers we have. We have a certain number of print subscribers, but not the majority. So we do get readerships by wire, because of these new arrangements, which Terry also Type of articles, or types of pieces, we mainly publish regular research articles, which have to be eight thousand words in length, including everything, which means for the most abstract, really often. And they have to be based on original and empirical research, and that is very important, we may get back to this later. We publish book reviews also, so I'll have the same appeal that Terry did earlier. We are looking for book reviewers, because it's not often easy to find people who maybe are not often, or senior people don't really have the time to do it. The thing not to do is to send a book review to the review editor, because we do not accept unsolicited reviews. But if you send, Nick Megron, as I mentioned, if you send a short CV saying, "I'm interested in reviewing a book, these are my research interests, please contact me," then I'm sure he will at some point, and we'll be inundated by emails next week. We also publish a new form of book review, which is called Author Critic Forum, whereby a book is reviewed by one reviewer, and then the whole thing is sent on to several other reviewers who comment both on the book and on the review, and that's been quite a successful formula, at least it's about four thousand words. We also publish review essays, often about the state of a particular discipline in the We also have special issues, although there is not a definite one per year, two per year, it's basically as they happen, and, I mean, we can't have four a year, obviously, and we try to have a maximum of two, but one is a good average. The way they happen is usually we get contacted by the person or by one scholar. This can be, and they can say, "I've got these people with me who'd like to publish a special issue on a particular subject," or they can be the result of a conference, which hasn't already been organised, which will be organised, or can be the result of a call for paper published in the journal. The editorial process, again, very similar to what you said, we receive submission, the editor sees it, then either she says, "No way," rejected, or she's unsure, and then may send it for an initial screening, which is not a proper review, but send it to a specialist and say, "What do you think about this? I've got my doubts, or I think it's great, what do you think?" And then we move on from there, which sort of saves time for the author, and for the reviewers, and for everybody. So we try to do this as much as possible. If the manuscript's sent out for review, there are four scenarios. The first one is the manuscript accepted straight away, which basically never happens, I've seen it once or twice, there's always some revisions suggested. Then we've got accept revise, so your manuscript is accepted, subject to these revisions that we're asking you to do, to make. I'd say this is about maybe ten percent of the manuscripts we receive. The vast majority would be revise and resubmit. What I find is, because our rejection rate is about similar seventy to eighty percent, a lot of people get revise and resubmit, but do not resubmit, maybe they take it as too much criticism, or they get discouraged, or, but when you get revise and resubmit, it is the vast majority, so please do resubmit. You don't have to do it next week, we give up to a year to resubmit, so that we can keep track of it. So if you do resubmit three years later, do inform us along the way. So if you do resubmit three years later, do inform us along the way of what your intentions are. Then the revised articles come in. Then there is often a second review process, especially if the topic is not a specialty of the editor. And then the final outcome, if it's revised and resubmit, can be accepted or rejected after the second review process, although that doesn't happen very often, but it does happen. Concerning the impact factor, I'm afraid to say we still haven't got one. We started the procedure about two or three years ago. It takes a lot of time to be SI rated. What we do have is the number of citations. Until you're in, then they put you under the website's number of citations in journals that are rated. And we've got about between 30 and 50 citations a year. It's going up all the time, so it's not bad at all. Issues that are specific to Cas, maybe we'll talk about that later. But I would say the problems we have for articles from the region are, first, the language, because we'd love to be able to rewrite every article, or we only accept articles in English. But we do encounter problems with English, and we don't have the capacity to rewrite or have translated articles. Although the editor does do a lot of re-editing, if she does see potential, she'll try and salvage as much as possible and help the author. So don't be discouraged by that as well. But the better English your article, the better quality your article is, the better it is really. But this can be fixed. Another probably bigger problem is the fact that a lot of submissions do not engage with theory. And we don't, I mean, we want to attract people from the region who have not necessarily been trained to publish in Western academic journals. The thing is, they often have, what's, the thing is, they have the area knowledge, but they don't necessarily have the tools to make that knowledge speak to the body of existing knowledge in a particular discipline. I mean, that's the case of a lot of them. So maybe we can discuss that later, about how to close this gap. So this is from younger scholars, but we also get a lot of manuscripts from practitioners, people from NGOs, for instance, who have a lot of knowledge, same thing, from the area, from the region, from the ground. But what they send us is a consultancy report. And we can't publish consultancy reports. So same thing, how to work on that, how to improve that. In terms of topics, just to finish, the field of Central Asian Studies has been dominated in the last few years by geopolitics and domestically, issues revolving around the politics of nation-building, identity and ethnicity. We have tried, in the last two or three years, to get out of these confines and try and combine up-to-the-minute analysis of unfolding events. And I'm thinking of the specialist issues we did on the Tulek Revolution in Kyrgyzstan, the Rose Revolution in Georgia, and the writing in Xinjiang. These were three almost protective specialist issues that were quite popular, and which use social theory and proper historical and analytic centralisation. Now we aim, in terms of what we like to publish, we'd like to broaden this focus further with greater attention to the effects of globalisation on the region. And I'm echoing what Charles King was saying yesterday, particularly new forms of mobility and migration, changing political economy, new spatial and urban forms, to mention a few topics. These are topics we'd like to publish more on, and we welcome any submissions on this. There's also education, new civil society, popular culture and energy are topics we're interested in. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all the panellists for the introductions. And those introductions covered the most of the questions that I would like to pose for the second round. But anyway, I have some questions that might coincide with all the audience's questions. And I would like to pose those and I would like to get your comments, very, in a very short way, so that you could have some questions on the floor as well. I would like to ask you, as editors of these journals, your experiences and your advisors advise to the young scholars here on how to get published in your journal, specifically technically. As a, feeling as a young scholar as well, I'm really eager to hear your comments. And what should they focus at the writing phases? It takes two phases, writing and submitting. What should they take into consideration when writing and when submitting? For instance, do you think that chapters of PhD dissertations are the first and most available pieces to publish for young scholars? How can they reflect methodology, their argument, and style of thesis properly and clearly? What are your advisors on following the ethical rules, how to prevent plagiarism? Or, you know, referencing properly to prevent plagiarism? And another question that comes to mind is that should they get proof from their colleagues, from their advisors before submitting? It's good to have proofreading in English, but is it good to have prior reviews before submission? And in terms of submitting, how can they choose the right journal? Just by looking at web of signs, selecting from those lists? Or looking at the topics that are being published in those journals? And a final question, is sticking to the journal's guidelines, styles, is important? So I'm not expecting you to answer all of these questions, but in a nutshell, your recommendations begin to context all those questions or the others that comes to mind, like to the audience. So maybe we should start in reverse order and start with you.
Well, first, I would say the first thing when you consider submitting to a journal is to know the journal you're submitting to and really see what they've published before, what kind of articles they publish, how they publish them, the type of structure of articles and how they are. Is the area topic covered by the journal? Has it been covered two months ago already? Because, I mean, we often get submissions on a topic. And we publish a specialist issue or an article, let's say, a year before, and this article is not cited or a specialist issue. And we wonder, has that person seen the journal? Have they, do they know the journal? Have they seen the specialist issue we did on the same subject exactly? So I think it's important when you submit to a journal to actually know it. It's not bad either, when you submit to explain in a short cover letter what are your motivations for submitting to this particular journal and not another. In terms of, you asked about the journal's instructions, and maybe I can cover that quickly. We do not require authors to follow the standard sheet by the letter when they submit to us, because we have a particular system, the Harvard, we use the Harvard reference system for author dates. We do not require it, but it's always better if an article is published that is submitted in the way it's supposed to be published, because it shows that the author has made a bit of an effort for your journal. And also, you can be advantageous in some ways, bits of the Harvard system, make it shorter also, than for those, for instance. I would say, I mean, one makes you cruel that most of you will be aware of, that never submit the same article to several journals. I think everybody knows that, especially in a small field. It will come out quite quickly, and then that's the end of your submission, not only with your journal, but with the other also. So wait till it's rejected, you can withdraw it if you want, but do not submit this article to several journals at the same time. About how to write, I would say the main question, I mean, again, I'm not an academic, but I'd say the main question you've got to ask yourself is, have I got anything new or significant to contribute to knowledge in this particular field? Nothing, that shouldn't be the first question to ask when you're writing a paper and submitting. I mean, for Central Asian Survey, our manuscripts have to be, our submissions have to be based on the traditional geological research, so we tend to avoid think pieces, policy papers, this sort of thing. Some of the journals do this, so you need to do that. Plagiarism, well, not recommended. Make sure you quote people properly with quotations. Tell us which chapter you belong. It does happen, that is not recommended. I think a chapter is possible, but it has to be rewritten in a way that it becomes an entity in itself. So it has to be in textualised, it has to stand on its own without being added on the other chapters. And I think that probably necessitates quite a bit of work, more than it appears maybe. But it's perfectly possible, and a lot of articles come from that, from Caucasian chapters. So that's encouraged as far as I'm concerned. But it has to be rewritten and included in context to be stand-alone.
I think I don't disagree with very much of what Raffensperg said there at all. I would probably put the question of PhD chapters a bit more strongly. I would say, don't start with a single chapter and expect that it would be publishable as an article. In writing your PhD, you are writing a much longer piece of work and you have more space to develop arguments across the whole PhD. And so any particular chapter, by definition, is really going to be one small part of a much bigger argument. For the article to make sense, it has to, as I've said, it has to make sense in its own right, it has to stand alone. So I think I would link the first question that's in enders here, that's about chapters of PhDs, with the second one reflecting methodology, arguments and hypothesis problem. I would think that almost any PhD, that I've never been associated with supervising or examining, the writer would have to decide which bit of the PhD to focus on in the article. Often PhDs deal with three or four different aspects of a topic. Maybe they deal with different case studies. It means to use that in an article, probably you need a little bit of your introduction, a little bit of your literature review, and some of your analysis and conclusion chapters. You have to calibreise those in some way or other fairly briefly to put the central focus of your article into a context so that the article starts off with clear research questions or advices, shows how the argument is being developed to answer those questions, and comes to a conclusion. And I haven't seen many PhD theses where all that is done in one chapter. It does need quite a lot of rewriting. So obviously, if you're working on a PhD or a just finished one, the obvious place to start is in your PhD thesis. And maybe you can get a few articles out of it, if you're lucky, but each one of them will need to be reshaped from different parts of the PhD, I would suggest. Now, following ethical rules is the next one, I've got, plagiarism, duplication. Yes, I think, I don't see a lot of evidence of plagiarism in any articles that have been submitted to us. What can be a problem, and probably it's a problem you've mainly already resolved in writing your PhD, a key barrier when you tend to write articles, be sure that you give credit to the authors you've used for any ideas and any quotes. Now, if you're actually quoting, then make sure that you put those exact authors' words that you're quoting in quotation marks and cite the source, including the page number. If you're referring to an author because she or he has offered some more general idea that is useful in the literature, you don't need the page number, you still refer to the publication or publications that that idea was developed in. So make sure you give credit to any idea, whether it's quoted or not, that you used. Then you will avoid plagiarism, I think. And there's another question, duplication, which is probably more to do with your own work. Perhaps that's more difficult, the more experienced you get, because you've got a whole backlog of articles that you've published. Perhaps several often come from the same piece of research. But it's okay to use some of the same data, even some of the same quotes, if you're using them for a different purpose, to make a different argument or a different article. But you should be sure that only a small portion of an article actually draws on things you've already written. Journals differ on the extent to which they will accept, repeat versions of articles that have already been published somewhere else. We take the view of data studies, that if it's already in the public domain, basically if it already has an ICSN number, an international standard, serials number, then it already has been published, whether that publication is online or in print. You don't see the point, since we've got so many authors who want to get their articles out and then publish, in producing something that is easily available online. Which is not to say if you've published first online in a first draft and then done quite a lot of work on that article, that you shouldn't submit it for republication. But make sure it is substantially different, more developed, more mature piece of work, not simply the one that an online data series did publish for you earlier on. The other thing about ethics I would mention relates to quoting respondents if you don't interview based research. Quite often, if the subject matches in a sensitive area, you do want to ensure the anonymity of your interviewees or your respondents, or if you did ethnographic observation, that the group of people that you were quoting were to make those observations. So what we say to authors there is give as much information as you think you safely can, because the article will be more interesting if you can give a little bit of background. You don't need the name of the person. If the place or the date of the interviewer is sensitive, it can be easily traced back to that person and could cause problems and trip that either. But give us something, you know, if you can, rather than say, somebody told us, say, a 45-year-old woman from the area had this opinion, a younger 25-year-old said something else, a man from the same area had a third. You know, something to just make it a little bit more interesting, give a little bit of background, it's quite safe to give to your readers, but ensure the anonymity of the respondents. safe to give to your readers, but ensure the anonymity of the respondents, referencing properly who you've mentioned. I wouldn't advise getting full reviews before you submit, but certainly, if your first language is not English, sometimes even if it is, make sure that you get a bit of help from somebody who can just polish up the English for you. Sometimes when your first language is not English, your English can be too good, in terms of spoken English, and you're tempted to use slang and coagulants, which is great, when you're meeting with English-speaking friends, if you can really fit in to the culture, so to speak. But it's a little bit too informal, I think, maybe a bit old-fashioned, but that's the way I feel, that you shouldn't be using slang. And another reason for not using it is it is culture-specific. And this is something I say to American authors, just as much to any others, you know, don't use American slang, because the vast majority of our readers come from somewhere else, whichever country you take, and they won't understand the slang, they'll understand the standard English for proper slang. Choosing the right journal, and I mentioned that a bit in my presentation, make sure the countries cover the theory, make sure the subject areas fit for what that journal publishes, and follow the submission guidelines, yes, that's always a good idea. We wouldn't reject an article because it's not got the proper, we also use Harvard-type referencing system, so if you've got your references in footnotes with Latin terms like E V and O C, it's a good idea to rework that before you submit. You're going to have to rework it at some point, so why not do it before you submit to a journal? Look at one of the others, and then use that system. Maybe I should mention one other thing about language. We prefer to respect the particular language of the country or countries being discussed in an article. So if that includes accents and dialectics over certain letters, please keep them in, I think that's important for that particular language. I once had a Hungarian author who laboriously took out every single accent and dialectic, including Dr Hugh, which I think is unique to the area, and it was a shame for him that I asked him to put them all back in for a good purpose. And if it's Cyrillic language, Cyrillic alphabet-using language, take notice of the particular form of transliteration. You'll find this varies from country to country, I mean, the German system of transliteration is different from the French, it's different from the English language, but also, just to make that more complicated, there are at least two standard English language ones. Library of Congress has become the most popular, I'm afraid we're still stuck with the other one, that was equally popular back in the middle of the twentieth century, our editorial board has always felt quite strongly about keeping it. If you're submitting to Eurobait studies specifically, just have a quick look at the equivalent notice between the alphabets, it's pretty easy to do once you have that taken across, it's just slightly different from the one that perhaps you're used to. That covers most points, please have a nice day.
My colleagues have covered everything, so I will just mention a couple of points. Publishing parts of the PhD, I agree, completely have to be reworked, but I would encourage, because this is supposed to be really original work, so with new empirical material, mostly it should have new empirical material, original, completely contributions, and also quite refreshing approaches, because very often the best work of a scholar comes in the immature age. So I would encourage, with a caveat of things that the colleagues mentioned, getting reviews, I don't understand, well, I don't mean only proofreading the English, but also getting a scholar to read the article.
And comment on that?
Yeah.
Do you revise the volume?
I would think definitely, yes. And I noticed that the best, some of the best in the top journals, not area studies, but top journals in our field of political science, international relations, in my view, some of the best articles have a very long list of people who have contributed ideas. So if those top professors do it, why shouldn't the younger scholars do it? Or PhDs, definitely, yes. Proofreading is very important, especially for people in our regions, South, Balkans, Black Seas, and Eurasia, because it's really not always, not very easy to evaluate with a level of English. Choosing the right journal, it's very important, what my colleague from, yes, from Eurobait is from, mentioned, that go back to the journal to see what was published in that field, in that, on that country. First of all, there's, in my view, there's more chances of publication if the journal has not published much on a country, on a region, like I saw in our case, we have a lot of articles from two, three countries, on two, three countries, but not on several others, which are equally important for a journal. But also, a tip, I think you already know, make sure, if there was some interesting work on the country that you are working on, well, make sure you reference that work, because editors may go back to that guy to review it, so. Okay, what else? I think, I find that, I think it's very important for building capacity in the regions that we are discussing, that don't get published very often. It's very important to keep in mind that our journal, and I assume also my colleagues, more or less, most of the articles are being structured in this kind of such a way. And this is not the way that people write in my country, or in Germany, or in many of the countries that we are discussing. So it's a good idea to try to be clear, the front law of the arguments, structure the manuscript, build the arguments in a way that would be published in a journalism journal. It does not mean, it does not mean that it won't be published, but it will make your place much better.
Thank you for all the comments, and unfortunately, we don't have much time for questions and answers, but we are here for more minutes, for like, we can be here for like ten minutes more, and if you are interested with your questions, we would like you here, so floor is open to a couple of questions. Please introduce yourself first and then pose your questions, then my question.
Thank you for the outset, to have the opportunity to receive a mainly distinguished guest. Let me introduce myself, I am a retired ambassador of the Turkish Foreign Service, Ambassador Azar, and I am a former secretary-general of a regional organization and economic cooperation organization, located in Tehran. Now, I would like to raise two points, which are already debated, never mind, I would like to emphasise once more. First, the question of policy, the policy of publications, particularly the Europe Asia studies and Central Asia survey. Now, I would like to suggest whether it would be encouraging to give more focus on initiatives of regionalism or multilateralism. Because if I understood correctly, Mr Terry Fox and Mr Gaffey underlined, or if I understood correctly, that they are focusing mainly on identity, ethnic issues, energy, maybe, I don't know, I don't know. But I would like to underline the fact that multilateralism is very present in this area, the area of Central Asia and Caucasus. But I don't see any, let's say, striking emphasis in the international press, not, I am not referring to your publications particularly, but in the international press, I don't see many, let's say, articles or essays on Lexi Corporation, for example, or my organization, my regional organization, Economic Cooperation Organization, or the computer building organization initiated by Nazarbayev of Kazakistan. So my point is whether the distinguished publications, distinguished directors of these very selected, selected, selected publications, would like to give some more space for multilateralism in the publication. This is the first. Now, the second point is already emphasised by Sinem, and you, I mean, do you think that you should ignore the focus on young scholars? Because if you mention the rate of rejection as eighty percent, so I think few people will have enough, will be enough courage to apply to your publications, and I think it would be maybe encouraging to adopt some special tariff for young scholars. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then?
I'm actually a bit confused about choosing the right journal, because you mentioned that whenever, when you are choosing the journal, they overlook the back issues. So let's say, if I would like to publish a paper on Turkey, if I see that, saw that in the back, in the previous issues, I saw Turkey, is it a good sign or not for me to sign there? Well, I'm gonna respond to that here, this journal is publishing on Turkey, is it a good sign or not? So can you elaborate on that?
Any other question from the floor? Who would like to?
Well, since I raised it, I was the last to raise this. I mean, this is an area, area studies journal, so we are covering a quite large geographical area, and I think, from my point of view, the journal wants to have some balance, geographic balance, in the articles that are published.
Is your journal policy that you give numbers, or somehow come out like this?
Sure. No, it's not the journal's policies, they are, we receive more articles, so please, on Turkey, on post-communist Balkan, so we publish more of these. So I would suggest that if you see a journal that is, it's a black studies journal, and it has published only two articles on Azerbaijan or on Georgia, I think there's more chances that, if the article is good, the article is good, yeah, there's more chances that the article will be published. If the same, if the journal has published five articles on Turkey in the last six months, then it is, makes sense that the editors would want to delay the next article in Turkey. That's my proposal from Andrew.
Yes, I think, in order to last word, they're delaying maybe the crucial, we're not talking about rejecting articles because they're about a particular issue or region or a particular topic. If I had quite a lot of articles on a certain topic or a certain country in recent issues, I might say, well, let's wait a couple of issues and bring that out further, pleasure in the air, for example. So the question of what we reject, what we accept, is very different from what goes into each issue. Like I said, I also try to have a balance. We, in our case, we get more articles on Russia than any other country, so I would say there, except for specialist issues, there is always an article on Russia, whether it's historical or current, sometimes. And then I also try to get one on Eastern Europe, one on Central Asia, maybe one on Caucasus, it doesn't work every single time, but I like, I hope in some way that there is at least one article that each subscriber wants to read and invest in, so to do. As I mentioned, unfortunately, our journal doesn't cover articles only on Turkey, because of our definition, obviously, it's not the post-communist. While I break up the microphone, maybe I could answer the other questions. Really, it's no policy to commission articles, so I think the only way you could steer a publication in a direction that is not receiving a lot of attention by researchers would be commission. But it is not a policy of our editorial board, it's something that I would recommend either, we have so many good articles, that I think our role is to reflect the research that is being done. So if not enough research is being done on the issues you raised, I would say that's to do with the policy of the universities and the funding bodies, if they're not funding sufficient research. And maybe that's where the articles should be directed, encourage more research, and then I'm sure that will generate more publications, which certainly Eurobait studies would reflect. Similarly, with the approach of a young scholar, it's like, doesn't it, I think that's a bit patronising, I don't want to say, oh, you're a young scholar, it's not that as good, therefore we'll publish you anyway. And frankly, the articles by young academic scholars are as good as any others. Although we've got a rejection rate of eighty percent around that, we are regularly publishing articles that come from PhDs or people who have their research project after their PhD. So I don't think the youngest scholar is a disadvantage, in some ways, the youngest scholars are more up to date in the current trends of the field, and in that sense, they possibly even have the advantage.
You totally agree with this. When we receive papers from young scholars from the region, the editor will make extra effort to make it go through. There's some things we can't do, is, as I'm saying, if there's no theory in the article, or no connection to the existing literature, or, we can't work on that, we can suggest that the author goes back and tries and reads what's been published on the topic, and addresses the issues. But, no, I think we help young scholars, and I think we do publish quite a few, we do try, that's one of our missions. Well, same thing on multilateralism, we don't get that many submissions on the topic, we've had articles on the SCO, so publish that.
SCO?
Yes, Shanghai, yes. So, also, there are trends, you know, articles coming ways, we did have a lot of SCO articles a while ago, but it seems to have calmed down. So we're depending on what's sent to us, really, we don't commission articles, or not very often. I think, yeah, the question about publishing on Turkey, it's not about the country, because otherwise we're going to be publishing articles again, it's really about the specific topic. If we publish recently something about education in the mistaken town, and six months later you send us a paper on the same topic, either we'll have to reject you for that reason, or we'll say, then we will have to be away to become publisher in the next available issue, or go back to another journal. go back to another journal. No, it's really a very similar topic, because we've had issues with three articles on Kazakhstan and what we, the journal we see before these articles. I mean, we do try and spread them out, it's a small, it's a small region, a small field, so we can't be too picky and have that well sent us.
And one intervention is that our, for instance, in our case, our, rejections include not only young scholars' submissions, but also seniors' submissions are also rejected, so there's no differentiation, we don't look at the names even, we try not to Google the people, so we run to those kinds of stuff, so.
Just a couple of points you had to, my colleagues had mentioned, about the delay of the articles. I think it's important, and I think editors, well, we would tell the author that, well, this is an interesting topic, that maybe it will be published later this day. And that's very important for some people because of job applications or the RAF in the UK, so they want to know this, this information is very important, so, you know, timing can matter. So topic is linked to timing, and then timing is important. But about the youngest scholars that Mr Masood mentioned, I think it's, I think the youngest scholars should be encouraged, because they have some of the most interesting empirical material, in my view. Usually, I think younger scholars have very often more interesting, better empirical material, but they don't have the techniques, they don't know the tools of getting the work published, so it takes time to get this knowledge, whereas you have very often the case of professors who keep repeating, even sometimes big professors, keep repeating the same things, which get published because they do have the skill of publishing. So there's, you know, there's this paradox here, this has to be resolved by younger scholars being more active in trying to get their work published. Also, younger scholars have more time to collect interesting material, and sometimes have more labour intensive, like ethnographic data, is there any big professor that can go back to the field like he or she did twenty years ago? Probably impossible. So younger scholars do bring a lot of interesting stuff to the journals, it just has to be put in the right way in the manuscript, so that it has more chances to be published.
So, thank you all, and in conclusion, maybe I can say that, please send us your submissions as a conclusion of this panel, and please join me in thanking all the panelists for their contribution.